I would like to call this Village Board Meeting of Thursday, May 15th, 2025, to order. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritado?
Here.
Trustee Matrasco?
Here.
Trustee Biacon?
Here.
President Giannelli?
Here. Tonight, military veterans will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me and join us. Military veterans, if you could please come forward. Join us here in the center. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Veterans, if you can please remain for a moment. To the veterans joining us this evening to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you. It is easy for us to sit here and applaud. It's easy for me to wear military pins on my jacket as a symbol of gratitude and recognition. But wearing a pin is simple. What you've done is hard, the service, the sacrifice, the commitment to something greater than yourselves. That is honorable, and that is something for which we are forever in your debt. We thank you, we salute you, and we are here for you today and always. I would like to read and recognize the veterans in attendance tonight. Petty Officer 3rd Class Marie Plazek, U.S. Navy. Sergeant John Tuckus, U.S. Army Airborne, and the Commander of the VFW Post 2377. Specialist E-4 Chuck Dombrowski, U.S. Army. Specialist 4 Bob Walters, U.S. Army. Corporal Enrique Arroyo, U.S. Marine Corps. E-5 Petty Officer 2nd Class Tyson Jones, U.S. Navy. Sergeant Jeff Lambert, U.S. Marine. E-6 Aaron Clayton, U.S. Navy. Corporal Officer Elvis Halipage, U.S. Marine Corps. E-3 Lance Corporal Officer Mason Huxamo, U.S. Marine Corps and Military Police. Sergeant Mark Guerrero, U.S. Marines. Specialist 4th Class James Plazek, U.S. Army. Thank you for your service. Thank you so much for joining us. We now move on to Board Petitions and Communications. Trustee Biacon?
Yes.
Board Report?
Oh, okay. So you want me to begin? Okay, no problem.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Okay, so the first thing here, I want to say thank you so much for all being here tonight. It's gonna be long. So first thing that I did was Inauguration Day. So let's begin there. That was really fun, very exciting to see everybody. On May 2nd, I spoke to local residents already, did a sidewalk complaint on East Montana. On May 3rd, I attended an opening day for our first tee ball, which is very exciting in the morning. On May 4th, I did a phone meeting with the mayor regarding the upcoming events and some appointments that we talked about already. On May 5th, I attended Queen Bee 16 Teachers Appreciation Luncheon. And some of them, as far as teachers, they also are residents. So I've already spoken to them also regarding some tree or local tree maintenance. And I spoke to a veteran who's here tonight.
Thanks.
On 7th, I spoke to a resident about a safety concern in the neighborhood. And on the 8th, we did a village tour, which I'm telling you now, it opened up my eyes. Okay, all the hard work and dedication people put us, is put through for, to make this village really run, okay? On the 10th, I finished my economic interest, which was due.
Good job.
I did also try to do my training as well. Unfortunately, I hadn't had any luck with that as well. And on the 12th, there was a issue as far as regarding safety for another district, and I did speak to my district partner, Pat Martado, the chief, about that, and also Mr. Flint. And then that brings me now to, almost to date. Okay, and then the last thing that is, I did have, I do walk my district, and I've already got a phone call and message to one of the residents on Schubert, and I took care of that complaint, along with Mr. Flint with that. And then now I'm here today with you for this board meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for your board report. Trustee Matrasco?
Okay, I am nowhere near as good as he is with dates. I will not trouble you with every single date of everything I've done, I promise. But I will say, the village tour was amazing, and this is something that I think as part of our village, if you're ever wondering, where does our water go? I am telling you, I did not know as much about water as I do after I came out of there. And it's, it wasn't long, it wasn't like it was five hours, but there's so much knowledge, and just to listen to the knowledge in that room, amazing. So I do encourage all of our village to, at any time, please not every single one the same day, but if you are interested, I would love to have, I'd love to go on a tour with you, and even give you some of the information I've learned as well, to show that we're definitely, we have a lot that does happen in this village. Things that I did not realize were happening. I did also do the training as we needed to do, so I am completely compliant. But one of the things I do want the village to know, especially in District 5, my phone's set up, the computer's set up, I am now available at any time you do need me. It will come to me, I will, in fact, if someone calls me right now, it'll come through. But just so you know, I am here for you. I have actually started making sure that in our area, we're getting out, making sure we're getting our grass cut, garbage cans put away and all, so that has already started. But please let them keep coming. If there's any issues, I also want to hear about good things, too. If we have someone that's in our district that has done something amazing, I want to hear it, I want to bring that. So these are things I'm also looking for. I'm looking for, who has the nicest lawn? Wouldn't that be cool? Let's have some competition in our district. So that's what I've got for this one.
Thank you so much. Trustee Meritado?
Okay, I'm not as good as John either, so. You're making me look bad, John.
Why did you go first?
All right, well, we started out with opening day at Glenside Baseball, the tee ball, which is great. Uh, let's see, I had 12 grass complaints that Tom and his crew took care of. I had two resident meetings during the week about our street program that's gonna be in our area soon. I had three trees removed on Gerberlo, which needed to be come down. All right, let's see what else we have. Oh, I met with, me and Keith met with the Homeowners Association, the presidents of the Four Phrases by the golf course. And I think, and plus, we took the newcomers, the newcomers. Doug set up a tour, so around the village, to show them everything that we do. So that came out nice for him. And that's about it, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Darlene?
I started with the Easter breakfast. I was with Colette, oh, Colette, please, Wojciechiewicz?
Wojciechiewicz? You're welcome, Colette.
Yes, Colette, I think it's Wojciechiewicz. We both worked one of the tables for the Easter breakfast, met a lot of residents coming in with the kids, that was awesome. I went to the grand opening of the turf soccer field over at Camera. Seriously, residents, if you have not seen that, the path around it is a little wobbly, but you can walk that path, and that is an excellent, that's an excellent amount of time that you could spend over there and just enjoy Camera Park. I went to my two favorites, Senior Center Bingo and Senior Center Trivia. One was Wednesday, one was Thursday. We really do have the best seniors, that's all there is to that. I also attended the recycling event. Jenny was there, and John was there.
You too.
Yeah. Weren't you there?
I was there.
Yeah, you were there.
No, I mean, you guys have very good notes.
That was, actually, that was an outstanding event that we do. We only are able to do it once a year, Janie was explaining to me, because we don't have the manpower for that, but really, that is an outstanding event. I did some professional development with Doug. I did coffee with the mayor and board, the very first one that we attended together. I also did GYHBS opening day. And for all of my Pokemon friends, I met one of the little tee ballers who seen the game going off in my back pocket, and he was so excited that he ran after me as I was going to the parking lot, and we traded a Pokemon, and that child could not have been more thrilled. I couldn't have been more thrilled for him. I was so excited for the little guy. I went to the Derby Day, which was our very first Derby Day at the Senior Center. That was just, honestly, Jennifer just did an outstanding job with that. And then I got to swear in my first police officer, which was, yes, Officer Isaac Fensek, or did I just, no, Fensek. And he is going down to SWIC this week. So that was all my excitement for the week.
Outstanding, thank you. Trustee Schmidt?
Okay, I attended Kathy Frederick's retirement party. Also attended the Glendale Heights Youth Baseball and Softball, my first tee ball, first pitch, coffee with the mayor and board, swore in the new police officer, Isaac, and attended our, as the meetings.
Thank you. Trustee Siddiqui?
Yeah, so my one is going to be very brief. Met with you and the rest of the newly-elected trustees on the orientation day. This was my first time, went to that, see all the great works which our employees are doing. Also, thanks to our Public Works, I must say, whenever I get any complaints or any things, they, I got, I think maybe in 30, within 30 minutes, a response, so thanks for that. There was a sidewalk which is uneven, and might be, you know, let someone trip on it, and there are some seniors in my area which complains about it, so thanks, Jeff, for taking care of that. Also, there was a fire hydrant which has been hit by cars twice, so this time we changed the color, make it more visible, hopefully, people are not going to be looking at the fire hydrant in yellow color, more visible. Before that, I think it was red, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, and then we changed that. Besides that, I also had a great meeting with our Senior Center at Anthony Place. Jennifer from the Senior Center gave the presentation over there, and that what kind of services we offer, and what we can do for seniors, and I'm kind of surprised, not a lot of seniors know what we can offer. Lynda Jackson Senior Center is one of the state-of-the-art facility which we have here. We provide great services, and the seniors really love when they heard from Jennifer, I was with her, and what kind of services we provide, and they really become excited, and you will be seeing more. The one thing which I find out is, our seniors really don't have a car.
Right.
So they are looking for more birth surveys or something which they can pick up, yeah, pick up from, because they love to come to our senior activities in our Senior Center, but the problem is, they don't have any comments, they have a comments problem, so might be, you know, something to look into it, but other than that, that's all from my side. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Light?
Thank you. Okay. I started out on April 3rd, I'm sorry, after the last meeting on the 3rd. We started at 8:00 a.m. at Raskin Park for the first pitch for my first tee ball, which was a great event, we had a lot of kids show up for it. Thank you, Beth Pappas, for getting your donation, because that helped fund quite a bit of it. Also, right after that, we went to coffee with the mayor and board, that started at 10:00 a.m. That was a really well-attended mayor, coffee with the mayor and board, a lot of good discussion took place at that time. Later that evening, I ended up at the VFW Hall for an event that was honoring our PD here in Glendale Heights. And I thought it was really special that the VFW wanted to pay honor to our police department. I thought that was really great. Had a meeting with a resident about their small business, to see if we can help navigate some muddy waters for them. That helped out quite a bit, as far as I know, we'll work some more on that. Helped a resident out also with their village sticker issue, they had a problem with the village sticker. So between myself and Doug Flint, we ended up working through some of this and getting it taken care of for them. Helped another small business owner with a clarification issue he had on his permit for repairing his building. I think we got that all cleared up, that should be good to go now. Took, had a few meetings with some of the IEC members about some upcoming programs that we have coming up. It was really a pretty good talk. And then also, spring is here, so is the tall grass, so is the weeds, and the property issues. All summer long, my wife and I take these romantic walks, so I can find problems like tall grass and issues without the, you know, throughout the village, so I can report back and try and get ahead of it. There are going to be a lot of these issues popping up. I asked the neighbors, if you have an issue with the property next door, check with the person, maybe there's a physical or monetary problem that they can't maintain their yard. Ask them if they might need help first, before you call ComDAB or myself, and ask for assistance getting the property taken care of. A lot of times, they just can't do it. So sometimes it just needs a little bit of help. They can even reach out to me, and I'll see if I can help with some of the stuff like that. I ask everybody to please call your trustees, they'll help us, you know, mitigate all this extra work that'll be coming up with the summer and the spring with all of our properties. So be kind to your neighbors, see if you can help them out, and then make the phone call, and we'll see what we can take care of. And I want to thank all the new board members. I mean, fantastic, I'm excited to see the people that want to work together. So thank you all. That should do it.
Thank you very much. For my board report, I attended coffee with the mayor and board, attended opening day ceremonies for the Glendale Heights Baseball and Softball. I held office hours, I met with our acting village administrator, as well as trustee Meritado. Together, we met with members of the community. I had several phone call meetings with all of our trustees to discuss appointments, met with trustee Light to discuss his mission and vision for the community, and also met with trustee Siddiqui to discuss future programming needs, met with several veterans to invite them to this evening's event, attended the facilities tour of our village operations. And I have to echo trustee Matrasco's sentiments. I was beyond impressed by the operation of each of these departments. The departments are staffed with people who genuinely care and are committed to the work and to serving our community, and the depth of knowledge was impressive, and just the scope, the sheer scope of the work that's done within the village. I've lived here my whole life, I had no idea, the work that's done every day. So thank you to all of our department heads who supported that tour, to Chief Pappas and Mr. Flint for organizing, and for all of the extraordinary work, because it was truly a wonderful evening. I attended coffee with the DuPage County mayors, where I had the opportunity to connect with the leadership from our neighboring towns. And I had a discussion with, excuse me, I attended the Governmental Agency Partnership Committee, and that was really an informative experience for me, getting to sit in the same room with members of Glenside Fire, Bloomingdale Fire, Bloomingdale Township, our department heads here, the school district representatives, just having a chance to hear how each of these organizations rely on each other and support each other for the unique needs of our community and the communities at large. Again, something that I was really glad to have experienced. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to begin our community announcements. Mr. Flint?
Thank you, Mayor. Coffee and chat with the village president. The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, June 7th, at the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302, or contact your district trustee.
Thank you. Mr. Byalis?
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day, at 11:00 a.m. at Veteran Memorial Park, we will honor the memory of the brave men and women who died while serving our country. The Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 will conduct a fallen warrior ceremony, followed by a replaying ceremony. This includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute, patriotic acknowledgement. If you would like to help by volunteering to help plant American flags on Thursday, May 22nd, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Veterans Memorial Park, please visit the village's website at www.glandalehighs.org. Each flag represents a fallen soldier from Operations, Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan. For more information, please call Jessica at 630-260-6060. Please note, in observation of Memorial Day, village offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th.
Thank you. Chief Pappas?
Thank you, Mayor. Join the Glendale Heights Police Department tomorrow, May 17th, from 5:00 a.m. to noon, as we help raise funds for the Special Olympics with the Cop on the Rooftop. The Glendale Heights Police Department is teaming up with Dunkin' Donuts at the intersection of Bloomingdale and Armutrell Road, and also the Dunkin' Donuts off of North Avenue, to sell merchandise and solicit donations, all benefiting our friends from the Special Olympics, Illinois. If you have any questions, please contact the police department, not emergency number, at 630-260-6070. Also, stop by the Veterans Memorial Park every Thursday this summer for Glendale Heights Market. The market has new hours from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. every week. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more locally sourced vendors. If you'd like to be a vendor or need more information, please contact Tony Mako at
Thank you. Mr. Knouse?
Thank you, Mayor. Join the Village of Glendale Heights and the University of Chicago Medicine Advent Health Glen Oaks for a free medical clinic on Saturday, June 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Sports Hub. This clinic is free and open to the public to help those who cannot afford healthcare insurance. Families and children are welcome. Services include dental exams, diabetes and nutrition education, eye exams, lab screenings, primary care, and much more. For more information or to pre-register, please visit www.glandalehighs.org. Summer is just around the corner, and the GH2O Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend. Purchase your pool pass now through the end of May for discounted rates. Benefits to becoming a member include priority entrance at 11:30 a.m. and discounts on swim lessons, swim team registrations, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060.
Thank you. Mr. McComber?
Thank you, Mayor. Throughout the month of May, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded, no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Street parking is not allowed on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website, and for any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040.
Thank you. Mr. Cahill?
The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of full-time, part-time, and seasonal positions. Positions range from the full-time director of community development, customer service office, or community service officer, office technician, and also part-time customer service associates and lifeguards. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr, or contact Human Resources at 603-909-5357.
Thank you. Ms. Garza?
Register today for the village's e-newsletter. On the first Monday of each month, we will email you information regarding the month ahead with news from the Village of Glendale Heights, various programs, events, and other important information. To register, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org. If you have any questions, please contact the village's Public Relations Division at
Thank you. Ms. Cravens?
Thank you, Mayor. New village vehicle stickers are now available to purchase. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:00 a.m. July 1st, 2025, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15, motorcycle tags are 12, recreational vehicle stickers are 18, and trucks with B-plates are 25. There is an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weights. The village is also offering a forever vehicle sticker for senior citizens age 62 or better. One free forever vehicle sticker is issued per qualifying household and does not require annual renewal. For more information regarding village vehicle stickers, call 630-260-6000.
Thank you.
Should be number 3 under petitions and communications.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on, thank you all for participating in our announcements, I appreciate that very much. Moving on to item number 3, change in second village board and committee of the whole meeting date in the month of June, from the 3rd Thursday to the 4th Thursday. Item 4, proclamation to proclaim May 21st, 2025 as Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. Item 5, a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025 as Medical Emergency Services Week. Item 6, a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations.
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you. Chief Pappas? We have a special recognition award this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, village board, for allowing me the time to acknowledge a heroic act performed by two of our residents. We believe it is important to recognize extraordinary feats by members of our community, and in March, two of our residents went above and beyond to assist a person in need. Tonight, we'll be acknowledging the heroic and selfless acts of Alfonso Gomez and Eliana Correll. I ask that Eliana and Alfonso please come forward. On March 28th, at approximately 1:00 p.m., officers responded to the 1300 block of Jill Cork for a traffic crash involving a vehicle on fire. The dispatcher advised that elderly occupant Thomas Sobeski was trapped inside the vehicle on fire. Upon officers' arrivals, Thomas had been pulled out of the car and brought to safety by two neighbors, Alfonso Gomez and Eliana Correll. Eliana and Alfonso had to smash a window to get the non-responsive Thomas out of the car. Glenside paramedics later rendered aid and transported Thomas to Good Samaritan Hospital, and the fire was extinguished. The quick and decisive actions by Eliana and Alfonso helped to preserve a life of a total stranger. These selfless and heroic actions are the hallmark of a member of our community's concern and empathy for another, the commitment to assist a fellow citizen, and all that encompasses humanity. For their heroic actions and outstanding acts of heroism, we will be presenting Eliana and Alfonso with our citizens' special recognition award. Thomas is currently in medical rehabilitation, but he will be watching this later on on YouTube. His daughter Kathy Harley and Nancy Koster are here to assist in presenting these awards on his behalf. If they can come forward, please.
Eliana, I want to thank you so much for what you did from the bottom of my heart. Really didn't think that my father would be able to look for such a thing.
Alfonso, we are hoping you're so grateful for what you did. You went above and beyond, and we're so grateful to you. Oh, and we are so grateful to you. You're like angels. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. And joke is on all of you, because I planned on crying tonight. That was planned. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Knouse? Glendale Heights Youth Baseball Softball Game Day Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Giannelli and board, for the opportunity to follow up on an event that we had for GHYBS earlier this month. On Saturday, May 3rd, we celebrated GHYBS getting into full swing with our Second Annual Game Day. This event included games from My First T-Ball to 12U softball and a number of different baseball divisions in between. In addition to exciting baseball and softball, we also had food, face painting, sign-making, and music throughout the day. The day started off around 9:00 a.m. when players for the White Sox and Tigers My First T-Ball teams lined up along with village trustees and Clerk Garland for the playing of the National Anthem and the throwing out of the first pitch. National Anthems were played before each game, with the second first pitch taking place before the 12U softball game at 3:30 that included Mayor Giannelli, Clerk Garland, and Bev Pappas. Throughout the day, there was baseball that was adorable. If you haven't seen a My First T-Ball game, you would not believe how much fun these youth have playing and how many parents it takes to help out in these games. To the highly competitive, at 3:15 that afternoon, we honored the 10U softball team from last year that won the league championship and unveiled their sign that now hangs at Reskin Park for future generations of softball and baseball players to see. The subtitle to our game day was a family event, and the families were definitely out cheering on the players. Laces also made appearances throughout the day to high-five and cheer on the teams as they got ready to play or after their games. Another major part of the day was having the players from Glendale Heights sign a thank you poster that will be given to Bev Pappas for her generous support of the GHYBS program. Her support has helped to keep the fees for the My First T-Ball affordable for everyone so that they can have a great experience with the sport to hopefully keep them coming back year after year. Again, thank you, Bev, for all that you've done and continue to do for GHYBS and Reskin Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on an agenda item?
Good evening. My name's Mr. Epstein. Congratulations. Okay. First question, Keith, on the meeting that you had with the four phases of my subdivision, how were your notifications sent out to all the residents?
It was for the board, so the boards were notified of that meeting.
Because I did not get any notification of that, so I was just wondering how the residents were communicated.
It was directly communicated to the board members. It was a board discussion.
Okay. All right, thank you. I see Chief Pappas is not here right now. And Doug, thank you for working on that water issue on the streets and everything. Sidewalks still need some issues. You know, in my area, there's some sunken areas. I don't know. I'm glad the streets people came out there and addressed the water. I know they did some workings with that. What I wanted to thank Chief on, Kathy is a very respectful person answering the phones for the police department. That's what I wanted to bring up with the chief. One thing I do want to comment with regards to the police department, though, is I would like to see some more enforcement with the, I know we're more than halfway through the parking enforcement on the street sweeping, but it seems like as soon as the street sweepers get there, the cars wind up back on the streets. I don't know. And I know they're supposed to be cleared through 4:00 p.m. each, you know, day that's designated, and it doesn't seem to be that way. So I would like to see them do another sweep through. It's nice seeing this, especially in my subdivision. It's a parking hazard a lot of times. They're not cleared and things like that. And it creates a problem with site hazard. A lot of times they're parking in no parking areas and things like that, so. That's basically, and again, congratulations, Mayor. I will discuss other issues that are more confidential, as we say, going forward, but thank you again and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Thank you. Consent agenda. I am requesting to move consent item number nine, a resolution appointing executive staff, village attorney, and village engineer for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois to new business. Can I have a motion to move consent item number nine to new business?
Motion.
Thank you, Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Is item number five?
Nine.
Nine?
No, nine is going to become five when we do business.
Yes.
That's true. When we do that.
Yes.
Okay, so we are item number five when we do business.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biakan?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you. Would Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of May 1st, 2025. Two, approval of the count's payable listing of May 15th, 2025, the amount of $3,332,188.05. Three, approval of the warrant report listing of May 15th, 2025, the amount of $118,078.17. Four, resolution designating freedom of information officers in the Village of Glendale Heights. Five, resolution to authorize the execution filing of an amended and report for giving Glendale Heights charity. Six, resolution to approve the allocation of the 2025 motor fuel tax dollars and authorize the execution of the Illinois Department of Transportation Form BLR 09110. Seven, resolution approving the execution of a master power supply agreement to provide full requirements electricity supply and related services for the Village of Glendale Heights Electric Aggregation Program. Eight, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the First Addendum to the Professional Auditing Services Agreement by and between Asimar Audit Solutions Incorporated and the Village of Glendale Heights. Nine has been moved to new business. Ten, a resolution to amend Resolution Number 2025-R-37 and authorize the execution of a lease purchase agreement for one John Deere mower and one John Deere gator. Eleven, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the Agreement between R.M.K. Fireworks Company and the Village of Glendale Heights for the 2025 Glendale Heights Fest fireworks display. Twelve is approval of consent items.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Trustee Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biakan?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
And Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Thank you. Old business? There is none. New business? A motion to waive first reading on new business items two through four? Is there a motion?
Matrasco?
Thank you, Trustee Matrasco.
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Biakan. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biakan?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
And Trustee Light?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to waive first reading on new business items two through four is approved. Item two, an ordinance to amend Section 3-22I, 21? 2I-2 entitled Tax Imposed Rate of Article I Entitled Food and Beverage Tax of Chapter 2 Entitled Village Taxes of Title III Entitled Finance and Taxation of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading is waived. This is Ordinance 2025-21. Is there a motion to adopt? Thank you, Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biakan?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-21 is approved. Item three, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, one 2009 International Dump Snow and Ice Fighter and one Moorbark Wood Chipper. First reading is waived. This is Ordinance 2025-22. Is there a motion to adopt? Thank you, Trustee Meritato.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Matrasco. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biakan?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-22 is approved. Item four, an ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of the Sixth Amendment to the Services Agreement by and between Precyend Development, Inc., doing business as Precyend Solutions and the Village of Glendale Heights. First reading is waived. This is Ordinance 2025-23. Is there a motion to adopt? Thank you, Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Siddiqui. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Biakan?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-23 is approved. Item five, a resolution appointing executive staff, village attorney, and village engineer for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Resolution 2025-R-55. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-55? Thank you, Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to begin our discussion with the advice and consent of the Glendale Heights Village Board. I am honored to bring you the following appointments. Doug Flint, Village Administrator. Doug has served as Acting Village Administrator since November 2021, stepping into this role after being appointed to Assistant Village Administrator. During this time, he has effectively carried out the responsibilities of two critical positions. Prior to this, he dedicated over 33 years to the Glendale Heights Police Department, culminating his distinguished law enforcement career as Chief of Police. I extend my sincere thanks to Doug for his outstanding service to our community, both as police officer and as Acting Village Administrator the past four years. George Pappas, Chief of Police. I have known Chief Pappas for many years, and I'm honored to appoint him as the Chief of Police for the Glendale Heights Police Department. He has devoted nearly 37 years to protecting and serving the residents of Glendale Heights, and his commitment to public safety is unmatched. Andrea Cravens, Acting Finance Director. Following the retirement of longtime Finance Director Bill Poling, I am pleased to appoint Deputy Finance Director Andrea Cravens as our new Acting Finance Director. Andrea has been a valuable member of the Finance Department for nearly a decade. Her leadership and dedication to maintaining the village's finance department and ensuring the village remains fiscally responsible makes her an excellent fit for this important role. Trustee Pat Meritato, Deputy Mayor. Trustee Meritato is the longest-serving current mayor, excuse me, member of the village board, having been re-elected five times since first taking office in 2003. His deep knowledge of our community and unwavering commitment to residents are a testament to his exceptional character and service. Christopher B. Burke Engineering, L.T.G., C.B.B.E.L., Village Engineer. Christopher B. Burke Engineering is among the premier engineering firms in Illinois. They have long served our village engineers, providing expert leadership on construction and infrastructure projects year after year. Starino, Romallo, and Durkin Village Attorneys. The law firm of Starino, Romallo, and Durkin has faithfully served as the village attorneys for more than 40 years. Their continued legal expertise and counsel are invaluable, and we are proud to maintain this trusted partnership. We have additional appointments to make and recognize the importance of moving forward diligently to ensure stability in our leadership and across our teams for the good of our community. I'm looking forward to meeting with our current leadership in the coming week and beginning these important discussions as we move together, as we work together to move Glendale Heights forward. Any further discussion on the motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-55? Call. Yes, sir.
I just want to congratulate each and every one.
Yes, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Biakan?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-55 is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item? If no, at this time, we will recess the village board meeting to go to the committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion to recess to the committee of the whole meeting?
Motion to recess.
Thank you, Trustee Siddiqui.
Second.
Can I borrow yours?
Yes.
Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120/20C2, pending litigation and probable or imminent litigation pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120/2C11. Can I have a second? Thank you, Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Biakan?
Yes.
Thank you. This meeting is recessed. Trustee Meritato, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to call the committee, the whole meeting of Thursday.
No, we're recessing the board meeting. We'll have exec session after COW.
What was the motion for that? Maybe I missed?
So there should be a... Yeah, there should be a motion to recess the board meeting. We don't, the exec session, we'll get back to the, when we recome back to the board meeting after the COW, we'll read the...
So was the motion to recess, or was it to recess the board?
The motion is to recess and go to the cow.
No, you did not. I thought you said to recess the board. I thought you said to recess the board and exec.
Yeah, we're good.
My error.
No, we're good.
My fault.
Okay. Pass out the count.
Okay, shall we start again? Okay.
It's all you.
Okay. I would like to call the committee, the whole meeting of Thursday, May 15th, 2025, to order. Clerk, no loose present?
Noted.
Is there any add-ons or deletions? Oh, none? That's great.
We bet you next time.
Okay, we go to committee reports. Number one, the Glendale Heights Golf Club, no report. Historical committee? No report. The ordinance committee? Okay, no report. Parking recreation committee? Uh, no report. Property enhancement committee?
No report.
Senior citizen advisory committee? Okay, there's no report there because we have no chairman. Okay. All right, we'll move on. Is there any public comment or the committee recommendations discussed regarding? Okay, is there anyone in the public that wants to address this board on the committee Hmm, this is good. Okay, we go to, we go to see committee recommendations. Number one, planning and zoning commission recommendations. A recommendation to move forward for a public hearing before the corporate authority for the approval of a pre-annexation agreement to allow an existing single-family dwelling to North 463 Island Avenue to make connection to the village sanitary system. Is there a motion? Uh, Trustee Light?
Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Second raised by Trustee Siddiqui. Is there a discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Bierkan?
Yes.
President Giannelli?
Yes.
Okay, discussion regarding, there is none. There is no other. Okay, could we have some public comments? Anybody want to make a public comment? Okay, Mr. Pope.
Can you give us the bill and pass that down the line?
Yeah, Keith, I guess it'll probably go to you or Doug, but the, the weeds on the parks and the parkways are literally three feet tall. I gave Bill the picture. If you could see the, the island going down Armitage, it's never been like that. And I know that you lost a lot of your guys and that stuff subcontracted, but don't we have weed control anymore?
So the subcontractor missed that area, and as far as I know, it was supposed to be addressed today. I did not get to check that, but if it wasn't addressed today, we'll make sure it's addressed tomorrow.
But they must have missed a lot, I think, because Nazos was just, I mean, the new baseball field, it's spectacular. I mean, it was pristine, but the rest of the park was just as bad as Armitage.
So this is that time of year, just like the residents, we end up in the same thing. All the parks have been cut within a week. Uh, that's our normal routine. Unfortunately, for three or four weeks every year, we go through the same thing, which is, that's all we can keep up with. We do have some extra cuts that we've put into some of the areas, and we will continue to offer some overtime to do some of that. But after the weed season, which should end here in a couple of weeks, we should be back to looking the way we should.
Are they supposed to be doing weed control, though? I mean, it's, it's pretty horrendous.
We do not do weed control in the parks. It would cost us an extensive amount of money. So I don't know if everybody remembers, but it always unfortunately looks like this for a short period of time, and after that, we're back to normal.
So they just missed, you're saying they missed Armitage, but the parks are just because we cut them so often, they don't need weed control?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, is there anyone else? State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Sarah Perez. I live over on West Montana Avenue in Glendale Heights. Um, first, I just want to commend the public works the past couple of times in the past few years when I have called having a concern about raised sidewalks that my daughter would trip on a ton of times. She has the pants in the holes to prove it. Um, she's like, Mom, can I get somebody to come out here and fix this? And so I called the public works, and within that week, they came out and they sanded it down, and that wasn't the end of it. They actually replaced it all. And so it was really cool for me and my six-year-old daughter to actually see, like, that we are seen and cared for. So I want to thank you guys for that. The reason I wanted to come here tonight is so that we could together begin to come up with a better and safer solution for the after-school release at Americana Elementary School. The crossing guards and the police assistants do a fantastic job, um, and we need them, and I'm so very thankful for them. Um, my concern is the traffic for the crossing of Fullerton Avenue when the students and parents are coming from the playground part of the school, and they park their cars on either side of Fullerton Avenue. And so the parking on either side of the school, it's just not big enough for all of them to be on the school side. So they're on the other side as well. And parents are not going to walk all the way down to President, cross over, and then walk all the way over. It's just not feasible. Um, so a lot of people are just crossing right where there is a little ramp onto the sidewalk to go into the school. And, um, just due to the lack of parking, what I typically do is I go down and wait by the tennis courts across from Camera Park, and then I wait until dismissal, about two minutes, and then I drive up and I go and I wait for somebody to pull out so then I can park. And there's been multiple times that I've been honked at and then I've been, like, had somebody speed around me as I'm either just, like, waiting. And I'm not waiting, like, a long time. It's like seconds to then pull in for these people to leave. And I've had people speed around me. And sometimes it's waiting for, for parents to cross. So it's just really concerning that these people are in a hurry, and I don't know if they don't understand, like, what is happening that this dismissal is going on. Um, so I'm thinking what could potentially be very helpful and alerting to people is across, um, when you're crossing the street from Camera Park to where the tennis courts are, they have the button with, there's no stop sign, but there's a button in a crosswalk with the flashing light. So when people are going to cross, that is an option. Um, and I don't know if it's just maybe lights that consistently go off, um, at that part for people to cross between school dismissal hours of, like, 2:50 to 3:30. Um, I know there's not enough manpower for police or crossing guards, because I know we're already short, but I just really would like to see some sort of solution. I know that even my husband, who went to Americana School when he was in middle school, he said this was a problem way back then. And so if we could just kind of try to elevate the safety there, um, I don't know. That's just my suggestion, but yeah.
Thank you. I, I, um, missed your first name?
Sarah.
Sarah, thank you so much. This is actually something that, um, we've had some initial conversations, myself and village administrator Flint, about just the congestion in that area because of the number of schools, the library, the golf course. It's really a challenge right there, and especially at those pickup and drop-off times. Looking at it through the lens of safety, um, and through the lens of just keeping the flow, um, moving, uh, is something that, again, we've had just initial conversations around, um, and, and when we think about solutions, it's going to mean, like, suggestions just like yours, but also where we can, where can we partner with District 16, um, and have their, uh, lens? And I don't want to speak on behalf of another organization, but, um, you know, is there an opportunity for them, a, a member of their team together with the village to help kind of coordinate the flow of traffic or just be thoughtful about the needs of the parents and the needs of the students and then the needs of the community at large? So I, I thank you for coming forward with this. I don't want to speak on behalf of the rest of the board, um, but this is something that we've got just an initial conversation on, but it does need a deeper dive, and for that, we do need to ask our, our parents and then our community partners like District 16 to step in and, and help us come up with the right solution. And not just a lo, a short-term solution. To your point of your spot, I think your husband, you said, went to school there? A long-term solution that's going to serve the students today, the families today, and the students tomorrow. So, um, I, I appreciate you stepping forward. Board, was there any other comment I didn't want to see?
Chief Pappas? We've been in, we've been in contact with the school for about five years now. That's my district. Crazy the street is backed up two, three blocks at a time.
Yeah, and that's just the cars. It's not even the walkers. So it's both ends. It's coming at each other.
Been going on for years. All the residents can't get out of the driveways. And we've been, well, Georgia, tell you, I mean, go ahead, George, you want to explain it?
Well, we, we are in talks with Dr. Williams, the superintendent from the school. We're trying to do something in conjunction with the village, the school district and the village, to make a pickup that will go on the west, I mean, the east side of the school and come back off on President. So it goes around the whole playground in the back part near Ameri, between Americana Park and Americana School. So it'll be coming off of Fullerton and going wrapping around to President. It's in the infancy stages right now, but we have already been talking about that. We all know it's not, it's, it's a difficult situation. You see the crossing guards, the police officers all the time. It is just, it's a bad spot. There's just so many people that drive now, and like your husband said, it's, there's not enough room over there, and that intersection is an intersection. Fullerton is one of our busiest side streets that we have. So, and you couple that with President Avenue, but we are in talks with Dr. Williams to try to do that. We are doing another project with him by Glenside Middle School, the property over there in conjunction with Camera Park. So I'm hopeful that we will get something done for you.
Can I ask one more question? As the, for the new development that you're talking about coming on Fullerton and then wrapping around, is that just for car riders or is that for walkers or everybody?
That's going to be, so we're hoping that that'll be for the car pickup, so then the walkers will have a better access to walk out, too. So we're, we're trying to alleviate cars off of standing still on the roadway, because when you have cars parked on the roadway like that, trying to pick students up, then it causes the other cars to cause more of a traffic jam. Then it causes more problems for the pedestrians walking. The whole idea is to get the cars off the roadway, so only cars that are on there are the ones that are going through traffic, the ones that are picking the students up. We hope to have them behind.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions, Mayor?
I'm American.
You state your name, please.
Yep, I'm, I'm Marie Plazek. Also been dealing with 16 and Americana for years. Um, I have one at Americana, one at Glenside. My fifth grader is geared to death to cross at Van Meter and Fullerton because people don't care about that blinking light. A stop sign would be extremely helpful for these kids. I mean, there's tons of kids crossing there, tons of them. I know they changed kind of the borders of where the kids go to the school after Pheasant Ridge closed. There's still a crossing guard on Stevenson and President. There is not a crossing guard there by the tennis courts. There is not a crossing guard on Nevada and, uh, President, and I seen a kid get touched by a car the other day there. The cars weren't looking. Another car is coming around the line. It's very dangerous right there. I won't even drive in those lines. So more protection with crossing guards, maybe some more stop signs. It's, it's extremely dangerous.
That's what we're trying to do. We're trying, you, you guys come up with, you guys, the problems there are the ones that we hear, and we got to alleviate that. And I think the best thing to do is, like you said, get those cars off the roadway. Because it causes too much congestion there.
It's horrible.
Uh, Trustee Meritato's been talking about this for years, so.
A long time. A long time.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else? Okay, being none. I need your motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Bill, you want to say something?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay. Bill made a motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, Trustee... Matrasco? Second. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Bierkan?
Yes.
And President Giannelli?
Yes.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. I would like to call this village board meeting back to order. Will the clerk please take note of who is present?
So noted.
Executive session, collecting, negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliber, deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act V, ILCS 120 dash two-C two-and-two, pending litigation and probable or imminent litigation pursuant to Open Meetings Act V, ILCS 120 slash two-C eleven. At this time, we will adjourn the village board meeting to go to executive session. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. It was Trustee Siddiqui?
And Matrasco.
And Matrasco. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Bierkan?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.